Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
David's hand is up.
David, yes, go ahead.
Thanks, Molly. I believe we should add an executive session for discussion of negotiations.
Yes. So we're removing 9A and adding one executive session. Yeah? Okay. Review and approve board minutes of April 13th and the 20th. Anybody have anything they want to change on those?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of both those dates. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the dates.
13th and the 20th, but I see Priscilla's hand up.
Okay.
And Margot.
Molly, I'm not sure it makes any difference. On page three, my comment was a question. Instead of the 32 students mentioned would be under discussion, it was would the 32 students mentioned be under discussion? But I don't know if it makes any difference because Chris Hodston has answered it in the next paragraph, so it probably doesn't make a whole lot of difference about worrying about it.
Okay, thank you. Margot, do you have something? I can't hear you.
Yeah, you're talking, Margot, but we can't hear you. And you're unmuted. So at least you're not showing as muted. Nope.
Can't hear you, Margot. She's going to type it in.
Yep. And Josh is now coming in for the minutes. He was at the meeting on the 13th.
Yeah, looks like we need to add her to the meeting on the 13th. Okay, thank you, Margot. So we have a motion to approve the minutes for April 13th and the 20th. We are going to add Margot to the 13th. And also under my comment on 13th, it says students and parents. And it should say students and teachers. Josh has got the corrections. So now we have a motion to approve with the changes of the 13th for Margot and her comment about students and teachers. And all those in favor of approving the minutes, please. Yes, David?
I was raising my hand, I.
Okay. So I think I can see everyone. I have Steve Fine, Priscilla, Chris, Colin, David, Brenda, Margot. That's all I got.
Deborah, no, Deborah writes here, but she's just not visible.
Okay. So everybody that I can see, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Deb, can you hear me? Thank you. I got everybody except for Deb. She's in there, Chris?
Well, it shows Deb, right? It doesn't show her muted. Jack Brier is now coming in. I'm bringing Jack in now.
I approve. Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you. Yep.
That's weird. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I can't see Jack, and he's muted.
Well, Jack is there. Yep, I see him.
Jack is unmuted.
The motion has been made, and we have voted on the motion to approve the board minutes. The only one I haven't heard from is Jack. So I'm going to approve the minutes.
Approve the minutes.
Thank you. Communication and public comments, if there is any.
I don't have any.
It doesn't look like there's any. Nobody's on the chat.
I had one from someone that I said I would share, Molly. And that was, they may have gotten in touch with Chris anyway because I referred them to Chris Hodston. Due with the scholarship from the Women's Club and how if the teachers could approve that some way, so we might want to get back to her and the concern that was going to take place.
Okay. I don't recall getting a message on that, but I will do an active search for it.
Okay. And you could get in touch with Betty Haggerty.
Okay.
On that.
Got you.
Okay, thank you, Priscilla. I don't believe we have any policies. Reports, the superintendent is under the weather today, and he has all of his reports on his log anyways, so if anybody wants to see that, they can get right in and read it. He didn't give you any, Chris, did he? To add to that?
No.
All right, Chris, you're up. Principals report.
So remote learning continues. I think that we have gotten ourselves into a reasonable routine. It's working better for some than others. We have done actually three surveys of students, and that's one of our key measuring points onto how things are going. And the last one was just done on Friday, so I haven't had a chance to scour through it. We had about 160 to 170 responses, and out of 300 students is a pretty good turnaround. So I can tell you this much. We did ask some very specific questions about what works for them in remote learning, what doesn't work for them in remote learning, what kinds of classes seem to be more time-consuming than others. So we were seeking some very specific information so we can take that information and apply it to how we are delivering the goods. So we have a faculty meeting tomorrow, so I'm sure we'll spend a little bit of time on that. But in general, and one of the broad questions that we asked is, how is the learning going for you? And they had three choices plus an other. So if they wanted to describe it differently than the three choices we gave, then that was a possibility. But there was it's going well, it's going all right, and it's not going well. And the well and all right added up to 83.3%. The not going well was 11.3%. And whatever those added subtracted from 100 were the kids that wanted to put it their own way. But most of the ones that put it their own way, it was just a different way of picking one of the two of them to about the same rate, you might say. So some just decided to say, that's going fine, it works for me, or this sucks. So.
Who is this survey among?
The students.
The students.
Yes. So as I said, there were some very specific questions beyond the general questions that I think we're going to be able to use to provide some feedback to teachers and some adjustments to how we do things.
Can I ask you a question?
Please do.
What does it mean if a kid says, you say to a kid, how's the remote learning going? And he says, it's going well. What does that mean?
So that was the broad question. We got more specifics. So let me give you an example of how we delve into the details. So in the survey, when we, so we asked, what is going well? Check all that apply. So some of the options there were, I like being able to work at my own pace, my teachers have been really responsive to my questions, I've had more time to understand what's being taught, my teachers have offered time to video chat. It goes on for about five more. We had a similar breakout for what is not going well for the learning at home. And each one of those had an other category. So not having had a chance to dive into all of this, I wanted to share with you as the board that we are diving fairly deeply into what's working and what's not, but I wanted to at least give you that broad stroke picture of well, all right, and not going well. So I think a point to be taken from your question, Steve, is, you know, well, all right, and not going well is in the eyes of the beholder, but I think if things weren't working for students, they would not hesitate to mark the it's not going well. But as I said, we have deeper dive questions that will help us apply some of these things. There's a question that says, what would make, help make learning at home easier? Options included creating a daily schedule routine so I know what to do and when, help communicating with my teachers, check in with my school counselor to talk about how things are going, help contacting my teacher, help managing my emails. There is even a nothing, I'm all set on that question. So. 117 of the 168 students who responded for that question marked nothing, I'm all set. And then it were about 20 different things that students opted for other. So I feel like we're, we've got a lot of really good information here at about the midway point for us to use to improve the student experience as much as it can be. I mean, the vast majority, even the ones that say that it's going well, going all right, would far rather be in school doing this than doing it the way that they are. So does that help, Stephen?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. That's what I got.
I see a hand that sounds like David's, David.
Go ahead, David.
Thank you, Molly. Chris, it may be premature to ask the question, but at what point do we cross-check the I'm doing all right against the actual academic performance?
Well, that's a really good question, David, because we, when we, while we aren't, we are treating this as a confidential survey, we do have the capability to dive deeper to find out how doing well and performing well cross-references. But I guess what I could say, David, is one of our ways of measuring how we're doing is for the past two weeks, we've set up three documents, three live documents that teachers and guidance councils have been able to access. And what we've asked teachers to do with their available time on Fridays is to go into that and put the names of the students that you have that are struggling and an explanation as to what that struggle is, how they're struggling. And it can then, and it goes to the guidance council, and they can sort that by name. So if there's a kid's name who got there four times because all four of their blocks are struggling, that's someone that's going to get more of our attention than the person that maybe got on there once because their A in math was sliding to a C in math, let's say. So I don't know that, I mean, as I said, we just got this information. Cross-referencing that with that sheet would be a good way for us to make use of both of that, both of those sets of information. But I feel like we are actively seeking from teachers who are the kids that are struggling. And I feel very confident that if the name's not on there, then they're doing all right in that class with that teacher.
Because my follow-up is actually a little more generic, and that is, I would be curious to know if you have 117 respondents saying doing all right, whether that checks out on a percentage basis. That's the kind of question I'm asking. I realize that we're in the brave new world here, a situation that none of us anticipated. And there's a learning curve, both for students and for instructors. I'm simply curious as to, I guess you might put it a different way, how accurate those students' self-evaluations prove to be?
Yeah, I feel very confident that our students have a really good sense for how they're doing, both based upon their interaction with teachers and the fact that we continue to grade their work and give them feedback on their work. So I really don't, I mean, there always, there could be a student who is, you know, really poorly reading the tea leaves, you might say, in terms of how their performance is going. But I feel pretty good that student survey responses relative to the questions we're asking will line up well with the actual performance. But yes, it's worth looking at.
My summary would be trust, but verify. The American President said that a few years ago.
Yep. Yep.
Seen that in the movies.
Yeah.
Just.
The one other thing that I will mention while I've got the audience is graduation. So as folks are probably aware, the folks in Montpelier have decided that regular old graduations can't happen. So we, early on in this, surveyed our seniors, and they didn't have a lot of interest in a virtual graduation, this sort of thing. They would have much rather waited until later in the summer, maybe just prior to going to off to college to do something, if we have the opportunity to do that. My concern is, I'm not, this is kind of my driver's ed problem as well. I'm not quite sure that things are going to get freed up significantly over the summer. I'm very hopeful and optimistic that we'll be back in our schools when the school year starts, but at that point, it might be difficult to get, you know, all of the seniors. And I really want everyone that would have been able to participate in June to be able to participate when we do it. So one of the things that we are actively pursuing is, and it doesn't really sound all that attractive when I describe it as a drive-through graduation, because that, you know, that drive-through dining experience isn't the same as the restaurant dining experience. But one of the things we're looking at is conceivably doing it from vehicles where we start with a parade that starts at the north end of Bellows Falls and takes us to the Hadley Field parking lot, where we would, we're exploring the possibility of setting up a mini drive-in experience where we try to take, prior to the graduation time, all of the students that would have read speeches and all of the speaking that would have happened from the podium, to get all of that together in a well-crafted video way, share it with the collected group from their vehicles, also potentially streaming it so that if folks wanted to look at something a little more controlled for them, you know, this kind of opportunity. The Fact TV will be giving you a call. And after we do that, have the students come in the order that they would receive their diplomas down our driveway, up to the front door, and deliver diplomas. So that's a brainchild that was just born this weekend. So that's how long we've had to think this over and come up with a plan that is something other than this and watch your mailbox for the diploma. So that's what we're looking at right now.
Go ahead, Priscilla.
I thought about this a lot this weekend, and I started to write an email today, and then I decided I would wait till tonight. But with the governor's statements out there that in a large, open space, you can have groups of 10, multiple groups of 10, I was wondering whether there was any way of setting it up just with the graduates, to be able to set them up in rows, maybe 10 across in one row with your six feet apart, and space them out enough that they could walk down and you could videotape this. And part of this is coming from the fact that I have a grandson that just finished this week at IVM, and I know how upsetting it is for him to not be doing his graduation, and just how important it is. And I really think that by June, we're all going to relax it even more. So if we could do it only with the graduates and say we can't have an audience, but we'll videotape it, then we would have that videotape to give to parents, grandparents, anyone else. And I was wondering whether you could at least consider that and see how that works out.
Well, I can tell you, Plan A before the press conference on Friday, with, again, an abundance of optimism that we might be able to do things like you just described, Priscilla, would have been to do that and provide a limited number of tickets to students so that a small number of family members could come. Those tickets would be checked at the entrance to the driveway so that nobody would be able to come in unless they were supposed to. And have the seats properly separated, have people wearing masks. But based on what the message was from Montpelier and from the AOE, I don't know that that's going to fly, even as you described it, Priscilla. But I will say this much, this was on Friday. Chris Pratt and I have.
In the Friday thing, I did hear him say that, you know, groups could happen like that, so that's another.
Yeah, but recently, even yourself said groups of 10. I can proudly say, we are graduating more than 10 students this year.
Yeah, I know, but if you lined them up, 10, and then a good space, and 10, and 10.
So we know that running the closest thing to a conventional and traditional graduation is what we're going to pull off. So as I said, Chris and I haven't had a chance to discuss our options. We've gone back and forth today via email on this, call it Plan B if you want to, but we've still got some time to figure this out. But what I would say is, a virtual graduation really didn't get anyone excited.
I agree, because I got that in my house, too. I did have one other question that I wanted to ask you. You commented last time on the attendance rate. And before I got on here tonight, it was saying that throughout the state, it's only 70, 80%, and I'm thinking ours might be better.
Oh, ours is far better than that, I got to tell you. But there's a, it's, you got to understand what attendance means nowadays, though, because ours has been at 95% or better. But even per the directions from the AOE, you as a student get credit for attending that day if you make any contact with your teacher. So for example, if I'm running a math class, and I've got a first block math class, and I've got three kids that weren't there, and I find the time to reach out to them and find out why they went there, if I make that contact, and that can be via email, if I get an email response, that gets a check in the box for attendance. So there's a significant difference between attendance and its connection to engagement in the, or there can be at least, attendance and its connection to engagement as opposed to when you actually set foot in the building.
So Deb Wright has made a comment, not feeling that this was a conversation that should be happening during this time. I kind of disagree. I think that everybody's a little anxious about what our school updates are, and especially graduation. But if we can, if anybody's got another question and.
I have a question.
Go for it, Steve.
I want to go back to your remote learning thing. You move too fast for me. I'm an old guy, and I can't move that fast. But the question I have is whether you've done anything like that with respect to remote teaching? Have you got feedback from teachers about how they feel things are going? Or I guess you have.
Oh, yeah. But.
Well, but have you done a survey like you did with the students?
I haven't. And so, no, I believe that's a reasonable question, and I am more than happy to do that.
Well, I'm not asking you to do it. I.
No, I think it's a good idea.
You think it's necessary, but I sure would like to know how the teachers are reacting to the remote teaching, you know? Remote learning is one thing, but remote teaching is altogether different.
So just know that when we are in regular instruction, we do a coordinators or a department heads meeting every other week, alternating with a faculty meeting. We've done one of each of those every week, so we've had a greater opportunity to come together as a staff, both building-level leadership and the general teaching population. So we've had a, we've had a good opportunity to banter around those things that we can control and those things that we can't control, because there are certain things that, from an instructional perspective, whether it's the time or it's the mode of instruction, there are certain things that are beyond our control. But let me, let me put some thought into, a more formal survey might be a way to get some better information, so.
All right, Chris, anything else?
Jack Brier, it looks like he has a question.
Yeah, two. One, actually, Steve Fine asked in part, I think it is important when we evaluate how kids are doing to see what the teachers think about how the kids are doing, because if I'm watching this screen, I know who's paying attention, who's kind of checked out. So it's not really, so it's a pretty good way of validating the information, because kids, you know, if I ask my kids when they're teenagers how they're doing in school, all right would be the default answer, whether or not they scored an A in the test, they're worried about whether they got in a fight that afternoon, would be the same answer. The, so I really do think we need to push back and test that all right stuff just a little bit. And academic progress and teachers' assessment of how the kids are doing would be a really important piece of that. I'm going to pivot, because I've got the forum, back to the graduation thing. I actually think the drive-by graduation's brilliant. The, we've got a, Chris is going to fall down from my complimenting him. This is a good idea. It's got, with the amount of kids that we have that graduate, this really makes a lot of sense. I've seen so much wishful thinking, and not just in this school system, but in school systems around the state and around New England. Oh, maybe somehow we'll have a sports program. No, you won't. Oh, maybe we'll have graduation the way it used to be. No, actually, that's not happening. If anything, it's a pretty good chance we'll have a second round of illness, and we should be planning for the worst case. I think that a drive-by graduation could be kind of bent and funny and memorable without people feeling deprived, and it's probably the best solution I've heard. And I think it was Tootsberry, Vargo, but I'm not entirely sure. I was just down that area just a couple days ago. So anyway, that's my comment.
All right, thanks, Jack.
Thank you. Tell again. I, thank you. I had a finance report emailed to me tonight, and I'm not sure if everybody, it looks like everybody else got it. Financials, if you're getting any questions, you'll just have to email Chris and/or Teresa for any comments on that. There is no committees that I'm aware of. Chris, do you have something?
I see, sorry, I see, I see David's hand up a couple times.
Go ahead, David.
I just simply wanted to say thanks to Teresa for getting that out. It has been an ongoing source of dialogue, particularly between Priscilla and myself. Not sure that this is exactly where we want to end up in terms of financial reporting, but it's nice to see the progress being made.
I agree. Thank you. Priscilla?
Since my name was mentioned, yes, it was much more detailed than what we've, than what we had been getting, and I do appreciate that. There does still need to be some work on the expenditures, and I'm, no, Chris Pratt's aware of that, and I'm sure he's working on that. I was concerned about the cost of the audits, and at some point, I think we should look at that.
Okay, thank you. David, WNESU Board Meeting Review?
Thank you, Molly. WNESU Board Meeting Review, I hate to put it in such stark terms, but it was mostly a boilerplate meeting. Perhaps the most significant outcome of it was that I did, I did relinquish my seat in favor of Steve Fine on negotiations. I think that some people may have felt that that was because I was discouraged about the outcome of early retirements. It wasn't. It truly was, as I said, a matter of bandwidth, and I have noticed that Steve's picked the tempo up considerably. And I think that the committee is pretty comfortable with Mr. Fine. And of course, I'm speaking for board members and obviously not for the association when I say this. WNESU Report, Molly.
Thank you very much. Can you make sure I get added to that? I'm pretty sure I'm a voting member, and I didn't get an, I got. Uh, can you make sure I get added to that? I'm pretty sure I'm a voting member and I didn't get an, I got no notification of the meeting and I missed it. Thank you.
Uh, which meeting is that you're referring to?
The WNSU meeting.
The regular meeting?
Right.
Okay, yes, I'm aware that you're not on that and I will make sure you get added. Really all board members should be noticed, but it seems to have been. The notices going out to the voting members, although there were actually a few missing from the most recent. McKay and we'll, we'll work on that. Thanks for bringing it.
Yeah, if everybody could be added, that'd be great. I mean, gives us an opportunity to participate at least.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any unfinished business for discussion? No? Okay, we're going to move on to eight new business for discussion. Approve, acknowledge teachers' retirement.
So when teachers retire, resign, we typically bring that letter here. This is the time of the year that contracts go out. So it's not like. I mean, typically there's a motion made to accept the resignation of, and you can certainly do that, but I will read the letter from Susan Steiner, who is. Unfortunately, going on to early retirement. So here's what it says. Dear Chris, please accept this letter as formal notice of my resignation as a science teacher at the Bellows Falls Union High School effective June 31st, 2020. After a period of great consideration, I have decided to take early retirement. I've truly enjoyed working at BF and teaching the sciences has given me great pride over the years to say that I work here. I've been honored to serve this warm and inviting community and to be surrounded by such wonderful people. Everyone at BF in one way or another has supported my teaching endeavors, which has allowed me to fulfill my goals as an educator and to share great achievements with my students. I would like to thank you personally, Chris, for providing me with so many opportunities to grow personally and professionally and offering me endless support. And taking on these opportunities to fulfill my goals as an inspirational educator. I hope that I have contributed towards your efforts and goals of having BF become one of Vermont's leading high schools. Under your leadership, I have no doubt that BF's fantastic reputation will continue to flourish and that the positive practices you have inspired will be encouraged for years to come. If I can be of any assistance during the transition of my position, please let me know sincerely, Susan Steiner. And I will just say that. She is probably in that shortlist of some of the best teachers I've ever been associated with. And I am really happy that she's hung around long enough for my kids to take classes from her. And in fact, my youngest junior is in her honors chemistry class right now. So Mrs. Steiner is heading off to greener pastures.
Do we have to do anything?
You don't really have to. It's been somewhat tradition that folks make a motion to accept the resignation and say something kind about the teacher. And then people vote on that motion, but that's.
But, but did she sign a contract?
No, she did not sign a contract for next year. This is her response to having received a contract. So that's her saying, um, I won't be coming back. Priscilla?
She is an awesome teacher. She did the environmental program and she did a lot, got a lot of honors for our high school students. An absolutely professional person to work with and an outstanding teacher. She definitely will be sadly missed and I think we should accept her resignation with gratitude and regret that she's not continuing with us.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I, I.
Colin, uh, there's a motion on the table, Colin. It looks like you have your hand up.
I was going to make the motion, but that's totally fine. Um, I just wanted to say she's an excellent teacher and she will be missed within the walls of the high school. I had an opportunity, um, she was, yeah, she was one of my teachers actually. So, uh, she will be missed. So thank you for your service.
So Chris, all you need is a motion accepting her resignation?
Yep.
So there is a motion on the table to accept. Um, Susan Steiner?
Yep.
Um, resignation. All those in favor?
Well, Jack has his hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Jack.
Again, I, I know the word is lovely and I sat in on some classes at the high school and the quality for teaching was. Evident immediately. And I think it's not, it would be no secret to say that I'm an admirer of hers and think she's probably one of the best teachers I've ever laid eyes on. She, this is, does this have anything to do with the current pandemic or any other thing? Do we have any senses?
I think it's fairly public knowledge that her, her husband passed away rather recently. And.
Yeah.
So those, those are life changes that make you think about what you're doing.
Maybe we should not get, agree to her resignation.
I would love it if that kind of action would keep her here. I would wholeheartedly encourage that.
Okay.
He's earned it.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting her resignation? Please say aye.
Aye.
I got it. Steven, Priscilla, Dave, Colin, Margot, Brenda, I got. And I think I just got Margot.
Good checks.
I. Jack and Deb Wright. Okay. Motion passes. So our next is appointments and we have appoint a school nurse for 2020, 2021 school year.
Yeah, this one is, is a pretty easy one because what I'm going to ask you to do is appoint the person who is currently the school nurse. So here's kind of the history behind that. If you may recall, Jen Joy, who had been our school nurse for many, many years, requested and had approved from this board. Uh, one year leave of absence. We were very fortunate to get Whitney to come on board. She's not just an RN, but she's on a advanced practice RN or a nurse practitioner. Um, and brings a wide variety of skills and qualifications, you might say to that position. But. When someone's on a one year leave of absence, you can only bring in their replacement officially for one year. So now we have to officially appoint her. To that continuing position. So.
So Jen Joy is resigning. She's her.
Yeah.
Position. Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Whitney Patterson is the name.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Whitney Patterson as the new school nurse for, what was it, Chris, 2021?
Yep, yep, for the next school year.
School year.
Basically, she's currently the school nurse now as well, but yes.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting Margot's?
I got a question.
Go ahead, Steve.
What, what is a school nurse going to do if the school isn't open?
Well, there, I, I don't have the full answer for you, but there are still health related responsibilities that. That school nurses have to attend to from a, a legal perspective. But having not been prepared to answer that question, there is still work for a school nurse. And I can tell you that because I live with one and she's been as busy as I've been. But I can report out more details on that if you'd like. There's still work for the school nurse, just like there's work for the school counselors. She won't be sending anyone home sick though, I'll tell you that much.
Any other questions?
Not for me.
All right. All those in favor of accepting Whitney Patterson as the school nurse for 2020, 2021 school year? Please raise your hand. It looks like I got.
Aye.
And then I got an eye from Deb. Jack, how about you?
I got, you got, should have an eye for me. I don't know if you can see me or not.
No, we see you.
I can't. Okay, we got it. Motion passes. Before we go into executive session, let's do director's comments. Mr. Fine.
I got nothing.
Priscilla?
I'm just continue to be impressed with the way Chris and all the teachers and everybody responds to this.
Colin?
Uh, just, you know, the outreach of, uh, you know, the support in the community, you know, for all, all our schools in our district has just been, you know, really remarkable. So just keep up the good work.
David?
Yes, I do actually, Molly. And several years ago, actually it's more than several years ago, we went from a traditional daily schedule to a block schedule. And I think that given the current economic situation, that we might want to revisit whether block schedule is still in the. Best interest of both education and the taxpayers. Uh, my fast math says that when you have a six period day and your collective bargaining agreement. Gives a teacher one planning period per day, that's one sixth of an academic day. Whereas when you're on a block schedule, it becomes a quarter of an academic day. That does have a substantial impact on how you staff a school. And I want to say that I fully realize that much of our academic program is on block. However, I think that we might be able to find a way where we can continue to offer the same programming. That we're offering on a block schedule under the more traditional model. And I would like to get that on a future agenda for discussion.
And Molly, I know that this isn't a place for discussion, but I just need to clear up a, a point of fact that was significant to what David said, but isn't true. Actually, our teachers get one eighth of a day planning because it's broken up into four blocks and eight periods. So they get one period per day for planning and that's one eighth of the day. And there's one period that is a duty. And then, and duties happen in a regular traditional schedule as well. So just know that that kind of flips the argument there. And I'm not here to say that it's not worthy of conversation, but instead of a fourth versus a sixth, it's an eighth of a day that teachers have for planning.
I appreciate the clarification and that's why we have Chris Hodson as principal in this school because he does have his facts straight, even when his board members apparently don't. I think it'd still be worthwhile to revisit the pros and cons of block schedule, Chris. Cause the other thing which I didn't bring up is I am aware that there are some students who feel that block is maybe too much. Of a good thing for a very long period of time.
Broke, don't fix it.
Yeah, so anyhow.
Um, Margot said she was all set. Brenda? You didn't hear you. Brenda, you all set? I couldn't hear you. You gotta unmute yourself. Chris, can you unmute her?
That's what I'm working at right now. Yep.
To see I'm not the only one that has a problem.
Just a second here. There you go.
Brenda, we got you.
Maybe we don't.
No, if we don't. I can't wait that we can do this in person.
Well.
Okay, Deb Wright said she was all set. And I just want to make a comment. I am really glad to hear that we are going to do something for graduation. You know, we all know that it's a huge thing for the community and, and you know, it's not just our school, but you know, every kid around here thinks they've been shorthanded something here. And it's, it's not the school's fault and it's nothing any of us have done. It's not what we want. And it's really nice to hear that we're gonna, we're gonna pull something off. I'm very excited about that. Um, agendas, items for next board meeting, email Chris right if you have something. Next board meeting date is June 8th. And I need a motion to go into executive session. For David?
I'm making that motion, Molly.
We're going to executive session for negotiation?
The purpose of discussion of negotiations.
And invite the administration.